Sixteen thirty. Part of the meeting. Okay, we have here tonight. Michael.
Present.
Oh, look at you. You are present Neil.
I am present.
To.
Present.
And my son. Uh, roll call is done. Anything online? Nobody, no, 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 nobody's online? Okay, he's usually pretty quick on it and if there's nobody online. People all know the weather, we might have to. No public comments, any public comment, we'll send them. Okay. Okay, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? No. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, motion is passed.
See reports, yeah.
Oh, sorry, so, yep, there we go, excuse me. What movements? Okay, students.
Yeah, um, so for this month, our club skills USA robotics urban search and rescue and drones went to state where Rochester robotics took all the medals of first through third with teams Mason. Daniel placing first, Karen and Lizeth taking second, and my partner Caitlin Black and me taking place in third. Drones also did amazing by claiming first place with our team Kayden and Zachariah. Sure tryouts are happening April ninth, eleventh, and twelfth. This week, our students are on their half day schedules for their conferences. Spring break fastly approaching next week, which has all of our students very excited. Um, April for eight through twelve, sprinkling is coming up. On April twelve will be our sprinkling dance, April twenty-six will be our multicultural festival. And May fourth, we have prom. Throughout this month, we've been doing March Madness to encourage his attendance where classes fall through brackets blue, white, and gold.
Life treating you good over there? Life treating you good? At the high school?
Yes.
Okay.
When is the nationals gonna be for the robotics? Where is that gonna be located at this year?
I wanna say Atlanta, Georgia, and it's going to be sometime during the summer. I wanna see around.
Like third week of June. What's that?
Before graduate.
After graduate.
I saw it in Georgia last year, too.
I think it moves after this year. I think if I remember Mr. Who's saying about something about Kentucky next year. It moves around every couple of years.
Excellent job and let everybody know we are very proud of the efforts that have been taken and considering where everything was last year at this time. Um, yeah, huge. Now we made some adjustments, uh, but yeah, absolutely wonderful news. You guys are juggernaut.
And nothing got stolen this time, which is excellent. Prime Mr. Chris, you're like, not today.
And how many days until graduation?
How many days to graduation? Haven't been counting. I've just been trying to get through.
Thank you, Grace.
Business report.
It fills up. It's amazing. Yes, I'm normally not first. I would be able to speak, you're normally not, but it's out of order. So out of the normal order. Best to have my sixteen year streak here.
And we're throwing a curve ball tonight, you know.
Um, so it looks like we'll start with our overall summary. At March, we had two thousand thirty-one FTE. And that was made up of two thousand one hundred one students. Uh, there were eighty-nine students participating in running start and thirty-three were running start only. Hart had fifty-three point eight six FTE. Our spec count increased slightly to three hundred forty-four and there were seven students eligible eligible to be counted for the dropout reengagement program. So the nice red arrow showing you historically compared to historically where FTE is in March. At the end of February, we go back a month for fiscal. Um, the fiscal year was fifty percent of the year completed. Our revenues were at forty-five point seven one and our expenditures are right on track at forty-nine point seven two. Um, and the last one is the offering summary, which shows our general fund ending February at four hundred fifty-eight thousand. Capital projects at three point three million, debt service at seven hundred and forty-six thousand, ASB at five hundred and fifty-two thousand. And transportation vehicle at a hundred and seventy-one thousand. So general fund does look low, but remember in April is when we get that, the chart starts going up.
And we are in the process of doing an audit or we aren't doing the audit, having an audit in place now. There will be an exit report on that. Uh, not till later in April. For the exit report for the audit.
Um, her, we met today and she plans on being done on May fifteenth. Um, so it'd be late May when the report happens.
Don't we get one done every year?
We do. So every year we get a fiscal program and financial statement audit. And this year it's our regular audit plus accountability, um, which they look at things like payroll controls and. Open public meetings that compliance and ASB things.
We ask for that or that's something they just.
It's a law that we have.
Next report is a principles.
So everything is is in line?
Yep.
From now on, okay, okay. Principal.
I'll go first.
Okay, nobody was just jumping up, ready to go, huh?
Principal, not interim, not acting.
Where I come from, the word acting, if you're in a position, the word acting doesn't mean anything because you're doing the job. So there's no acting to it because if something messes up.
We'll let it. Well, I hope not. Um, so I'm in bringing a report from Rochester Primary School. Um, we're looking at the SIP goal number two celebration here. So our uh, second SIP goal or school improvement goal was that. Um, this school year, our first and great, uh, second grade students that qualified for multilingual services. So we're not proficient in the speaking section of the WEDA would increase one level. So there's a lot coming at you with that goal. But the WEDA is the assessment on multilingual students taken. There are four components to the WEDA and the speaking is one part of them. So we want our students to increase in that. Um, and this is what we did. So I want to really highlight Candace Robinson, who was in the first picture and she's in this picture as well. Candace is our multilingual teacher at Rochester Primary School. And she led our staff through a series of professional development. Um, opportunities including learning about comprehensible input, uh, universal design for learners, uh, multi languages. Um, ML strategies like sentence patterning and the PIM, which is the picture word induction model. I learned so much from what Candace had to share with us. Uh, she shared the WEDA assessment, so we have a better understanding of what our students will be asked to do. Uh, the K L U's, which are our key language uses in the WEDA. And then our elevation program, which can help with. Um, you know, knowing where our students are. It's very intense. I don't know all of it. Maggie would know more. But she's taught our staff about how we can access that to know what our students need in the classroom. Um, but we couldn't have done any of this without Candace and I can't speak enough about how highly educated she is in this area and what she can bring to our staff. Um, she did seven hours, um, of professional development across cert meetings, uh, PD through our try and with our act Friday. So she just did amazing work for us. And how we applied the learning, because that's the big piece. Well, where does this go after we learn all of this from her? Um, it very much connects to the unit plan, lesson planning work we're doing in class. So on the right of the screen there. You'll see within the unit plants, plans that we're doing. Um, our kindergarten team. Um, is really thinking about how they could bring language to life within the lessons and the units they're currently teaching. And how language standards integrate with our reading and our math. And that's an example of the work they've put in to do that. And there's some links. Um, to some of the works that they've been doing. And then on the left is pieces that. Um, go along with universal design for learning, but also how we bring in the pieces that Candace has taught us into the lessons that we're teaching. With comprehensible input, supporting language supports and feedback. So that's the application of what our teachers are doing. And then we're also experiencing high levels of success with multilingual students in our dual language program. And we have kindergartners, uh, there are forty kindergartners being served by two teachers, Alana and Sarah are the bluebird and the. Oh, I think it's a tyrannosaurus rex, but you can't see her. Uh, but they're doing so much work with. Building these components. I sat in on a few conferences and the pyramid to the right. Was actually learning that was going on with myself and the parents that were there about the. The Spanish language arts, the SLA that the kids partake in each day where they go from the sound level, sonitas. Oh, I wish Alana was here. Iniciales, salabas, which is the syllables, palabras, the words. Arraciones, which is, uh, the sentences and then quintintos, which is the small little stories the kids are learning. And the kids in the kindergarten classroom can access this vocabulary and tell you they're learning the sounds or that sonitas. In Spanish and whenever they were sharing this information with their families, it was beautiful. Um, they said in one of their conferences, a family said, my little guy was going to the, um. Mexican restaurant and interacting with the weight staff and, uh, was pretty awesome. Uh, but we have a lot of. Kids learning their Spanish sounds, which are on the list. So another component to the multilingual work we're doing. Results, how we're measuring right now is basically through WEDA and WEDA's finished, but we don't have scores back yet. So we can't see if we've met the goal of going up one level in speaking, but we are also looking at our vocabulary scores within IREDDI. So kindergarten, first and second grade, um, the colors indicate the proficiency level. Green is where you want students to be from fall to winter in kindergarten. We went from thirty-eight percent of the population meeting proficiency to fifty-one in vocabulary. And you can see, um, that you see the yellow, that's where the scores went in the yellow zone. And then in first and second, if that makes sense in looking at that data. There will take one more assessment. So fall, winter, then there'll be a spring and what we want is more students in the green. Less in the red and hopefully less in the yellow, but sometimes yellow will grow as they move out of red as well. Uh, but those are the results we have so far. The results in the building are huge as we're building, um. More of a cultural component to being a dual language school. And we have more work to do, but it's been pretty awesome. And I'm looking forward to having dual language at first grade and kindergarten next year, so. Um, any questions for me? I did have some feedback from staff too, but I think that was about five minutes about Candace's work. So she's. She's pretty amazing.
How long has she been there?
Candace Robinson has been there as long as I have.
As long as I have.
Sixteen years.
I'm trying to think if she's the same one that. My youngest daughter. Pat.
Yeah, she used to be a second grade teacher before she moved into ML.
Okay, okay, yep, that's it then.
I believe, I believe so, I, you know, um.
I'm almost positive.
I, I, we were having this conversation, you know, because occasionally she'll watch the board meeting. She hasn't so much now that she has a grandbaby, but. Uh, and she was, when, when you had first gotten in, she was like, I think I had this daughter. And so I believe you are correct.
Yeah. Yeah, she does a great, great job. Um, I do have, if you would like to partake in the story retelling Spanish, uh, that's what dual language. Teacher sent me with, oh, take the one they could do in person. And I said, I don't know that they'll want to do that, but. Uh, but the kindergartners go through and retell the story by putting the beginning, the middle, the setting, the end across your five meters. Um, they're learning that in Spanish.
You had a question?
Question, um, given the fact that we're just winding down the year, coming close to the end. Uh, can you say a word about? Any families that have lost interest and one of the kids pulled out and, and no? That's excellent. And then any vibe about next year's interest? Are you getting more people interested than we have room for next year?
Yeah, no, uh, for students.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the kids that are currently being served in kindergarten will roll to first grade. There is one student that. I don't know that will get recruited to come in who is a multilingual student who chose not to be a part of the dual language program. And I don't know if we'll get that student wrapped in or not. Um, but the kindergarten program Maggie was telling me earlier, we have twenty-three already. Twenty-five already applied, which is huge considering there are twenty-seven registrations for kindergarten right now. So. So and when we compare the two, there are some people that have done the. The dual language application that haven't done the registration. So we're making sure those two pieces get done, but. Twenty-seven have registered and twenty-five are showing interest.
Wow, and how, what's the total max? How many kindergartners can we take?
Forty total, twenty Spanish speak, well, Spanish dominant at home, for the most part, Spanish speaking and then the English proficient.
And excellent, that's, that's amazing.
Yeah, how many teachers do we have that are?
That are bilingual or teaching it currently.
That, that are teaching that.
There are currently two teachers in kindergarten, Sarah Ensley and Alana Ramirez. And, um, Sarah teaches the English portion of the day and Alana teaches.
Oh, okay, okay. I heard you say, but I.
Yep, and then there'll be two more in first grade and then the next year, two more quarter of our populations.
Okay.
Of a certificate of dual or biliteracy by the time they're done, which is amazing.
Quarter, quarter of our student.
A quarter of our student population, thank you. And I'm learning.
I was just gonna, I was.
Uh, any other questions? Okay.
Hello. Go ahead, Susan. Um, so, uh, one of our goals, um, the last time we met, we talked about what we were working on for our multilingual learners. That was our goal one. And so our other goal is focused around our students with IEPs and it's a, it's a huge goal. Meeting their stretch goal or higher is a, is a big stretch, but we'd rather have big goals and shoot to meet them than. Not so right now, um, at our last check, we had twenty-three of our fifty-nine students with IEPs. In reading, um. That's thirty-nine percent of our students that were on target to meet this goal during our mid-year check. So the pictures you see, um, I'm gonna talk a little more about how, um, when we get to a different slide. So check out those pictures. These pictures are taken in our room in special services where they're doing. Um, some grouping together and some rotation, um. Things while they're teaching their kids focus on their skills. So it's pretty cool. So the pictures are just kind of fun, but they'll lead up to what I'm gonna talk about later. Um, you've heard us talk before about the letters training that Joey Easley has done throughout the year. And the case managers for our students with IEPs have of course participated in that as well. And so they're getting in some really intense focused, specific instruction that's gonna add to what they're already doing with their kids. In these different foundational skills within, um, that training. And so they're getting able to get their kids a lot more engaged, a lot more active in their reading, learning, reading and writing. So other things that our case managers are focusing on, um, this was our first year, my years at GMS, that we only have two case managers. Cause we had a little bit smaller, especially a caseload. And so they took an opportunity to get a little bit creative. So one of the things that, that we're doing, um, across, I believe through the district is. And certainly at Grand Mount is, um, those case managers attend the first part of our Friday PLC time in the genetic classroom. So that they can be sure to stay in tune with what are the learning standards and the targets that we're focusing on within our units. So that when they're doing their work with their kids, they're making sure that it's, um, they can tie it as close to the core curriculum. Or scaffold that learning so that they can be more successful in the classroom. And then, um, they're collaborating with teachers. There, when they visit there, they can share strategies to help support those students with IEPs, give those teachers ideas. Cause they know those kids pretty intimately from their small group work or from their push and support in the classroom. So they can share a lot of their tools. Um, they also participate in our student study teams. Those can, do include kids with IEPs at times, but they also include. Um, kids that are kids of concern that we want to try to brainstorm interventions for. Um, so that we can hopefully provide good interventions. Um, but sometimes out of an SST, we say, we tried everything and we suspect this kid might have some type of disability. And then we move forward to testing. So they're involved in that process all along the way. And then what they, um, started really created this year, that's why that's in bold, is this station rotation instructional model. So they focus it on what this kid's needs are. You can barely see here, my picture isn't as clear, but that's one of our resource room. Or our case managers and resource teachers. So they bring all the kids together at times to focus on like one big. Um, high interest topic. This happened to be an owl palette unit they did back a while back. And then when they break into their rotation groups, they're focusing on that, but they're doing writing activities around it. They're doing reading activities around it. And they're focusing on all those different skills at the same time to get those kids engaged and active. There's a lot of movement. It's actually between two rooms and several tables. So they're utilizing all their staff to get these kids. Intermix socially and involved. It's pretty exciting stuff. Um, in fact, Dr. Bethman happened to come in one day and got to see it in action. Um, so that's, that's really getting kids much more in, involved and active in that environment. Go ahead. And so I wanted to show you a quick example of something that came out of that. So the, the page up at the right is the owl palette that they were working on. So they were identifying the different parts. Of. The creatures that the owls have consumed. And so there, they identified all those and then they did some writing about owls. So to the right. You see kind of their, um, brainstorming of things owls can do, things owls have and things owls are. And then they took those and put them in a draft on the bottom left into some sentences with some help around the conclusion. And some support there. And then they took that and typed that into their Chromebooks. And we're able to type the complete paragraph about owls. So, um, all of those things to really, cause we know that the, the writing piece obviously helps, um. With the reading piece as well. There's a lot of research around that. So. Pretty exciting going, stuff going on there. Do you have any questions about that before I move on to a couple of quick celebrations?
I just have one question. Have the, the kids all together, are they by grade level or are they all intermixed grade levels?
They are by grade level typically for this time because it's during our intervention hour. So those are grade level specific. Their ability levels, of course, are all over.
I was wondering if it was more by a mill, a millennial.
Um, when they break into their focus, specific focus areas, sometimes it's more ability, but like. With this, it's very open-ended and so they support wherever those kids have that need. Okay, and then a couple of just quick celebrations of other things going on in GMS, um, some of you may be familiar. We do. Sodexo runs this future chef program every year and kids submit recipes and. They select kids to come over and bake and then people have to go over and judge. It's usually me and. And my assistant and oftentimes the superintendent and, and some other district office staff depending on who comes over. So they get to actually go into the kitchen at high school. They cook all this food. And there's a competition, everybody walks away with something. Um, but then they do have a little grand prize winner that gets a cooking set and it's pretty cool. It's a plant, chance for kids to showcase. Some of their talents. It's a little different from our academics and it's all sponsored by Sodexo. And then one other, um, fun event we had recently was our STEAM family night. Pictures speak for themselves. We had over two hundred and fifty folks there and lots of activities going on. Robotics came down and did their thing and. Um, baby shark even showed up or maybe Mrs. Ishler. Um, and the kids, as you can see, were just fascinated by that. And lots of math and science and art things going on all over, um, in the gym, in the portables. We had seven portable classrooms with different activities and families can roam freely and then of course we fed them. So. It's a fun night. Any, um, questions about any of that? All righty, thank you.
Hey, good evening, everybody. So I'm gonna throw a bunch of data at you, not a ton of fun, but interesting stuff, I think. So brief reminder, real quick, not gonna talk a ton about these two items, but. Our two goals, ninety percent of our ELL students will show typical or better growth on their reading IREDDI scores between spring and fall. For, uh, goal two. I'll get to it in a second. During the school year, seventy-five percent of our students, super more grade levels behind will show typical or better growth on their math IREDDI scores now. We said, we started working on these last spring. We could see that there were some issues that we were having, some challenge areas. That we really needed to focus on. And so we started working on this last spring, worked on it through the summer and then kind of finalized it in the fall after, you know, taking a little bit of time and. And going, okay, what do we need to do to tackle that? So with that in mind, you've got students who are quite often with IEPs. And many of our students who, uh, are EL students, are MLL population, those are our two main goal areas. Next page. This is a comparison, lots of data there. It looks a little more clunky up on a screen than it did on my, uh, on my computer, I'll be honest with you. But basically what you're looking at is some information that the state compiles that they just gave to us, uh, just a couple of weeks ago. That relates to all students and then breaks down into, no, stay there, please. We're gonna be there for a little bit. Um, sub-populations are American Indian, Alaska native folks, our Hispanic Latino folks, two or more races. White, English language learners, low income and students with disabilities. What I really want you to notice. Is the overall upward trend and one of the things that I want you to pay particular attention to is the first number in each of these groups on the left. That is twenty nineteen, that is pre-COVID. And there are eight different groupings up there. We are ahead of our twenty nineteen numbers in six of those eight areas. We are ahead of where we were pre-COVID. In one of those areas, we're tied. And in one of those areas, we're a little bit lower. The area that we're tied and the area that we're lower actually relate very significantly. To the two SIP goals we had. So we kind of had a, a little forecast idea of, you know, these are our challenge areas. And so we're doing some things to work on that. But, but I really thought it was important for you guys to see that. In many ways, we are doing significantly better than we did pre-COVID. I know we hear all of this, everything's worse, everything's worse. So everything since COVID, everything's downhill, everything's, you know what? And there are challenges, don't get me wrong. There are some things that are definitely like, oh, what happened? But I want you to see that in many ways, especially here in Rochester, and I know I've seen all the numbers for the elementary, they can make similar claims. Um. We're, we're definitely in better shape. Now, those all numbers, I'll just rattle through some stuff. There will not be a quiz. Um, those all numbers, consider these categories at the middle school level. They consider language arts proficiency. Math proficiency, language arts student growth percentile, how they're doing against similar academic peers, okay? Math student growth percentile, English language learner progress rate. And regular attendance rate. So all of that is lumped together to give us these numbers. And basically the goal is. To get as gray or blue as we can, definitely to get from dark orange to light. To get as gray or blue as we can, definitely to get from dark orange to light orange to gray to blue. And to be moving up numerically. This isn't golf. We don't want low numbers. We want to be moving up. So I wanted you to see that we're on the uptick, right? Related to this, I'm gonna flip to the next slide. We've been talking a lot about reducing the achievement gap. Okay. How do we help many of our struggling populations of folks to do better? And I want you to see racial stuff. Okay. Our Caucasian students are up. We want to have a rising tide for everybody. So yeah, we want to reduce the achievement gap, but we don't want to do that by dropping some groups. To make the groups look like they're tighter to each other. Okay? So our Caucasian students are up, but our American Indian Alaska native students are up even more. Our Hispanic Latino students are up way more. And our two or more racist students are up significantly more than that. As a matter of fact, in some cases, like if you look at Hispanic Latino. They went up one point four. They have closed that gap by over twenty-five percent on this metric. So. No, we still have some challenges, but those gaps are shrinking in these areas. So, and I wanted you to see that too.
Well, I feel like the slide before, maybe I misunderstood. But that, uh, English learning students. That was the one area that we were still, we were lower on.
English language, English learner students. And, um. Our students without evidence were both low. So what this indicates is. These students are doing better. So and even look at that in general, those numbers are lower. They're improving in these overall categories, but they're still not as good as they could be.
It's not square enough with me yet, cause this looks like the Hispanic Latino.
Okay. I think I know what you're talking about. So what we're talking about here.
This is just trace.
Yep. So what we're talking about here, if we're talking about Hispanic Latino, we were at four. In the, in twenty nineteen. We're at five point four now. Now I got you. So those are not the same groups identically. We have many of our Hispanic Latino students that are definitely not English language learners. So. Now I'm with you. And, and for us, it's a subset of that. But what you also need to know is, um, students who are, are tribal students are all in the English language learners group. Tribal students are all in the English language learners group as well. Um, and in many schools, not so much ours right now, but in many schools, other languages would be in there as well. And you could have Caucasian people that are English language learners because they're coming to us from, you know, other countries.
Well, I wanna make sure we're right on that, that all of our tribal students. Clarification. So especially as we get into middle school, the further we get up, it gets tricky. Because there are some Native American students, uh, and some Latino students. That were language learners, but now have demonstrated proficiency. In English language that are no longer considered in that category. So they may be multilingual. They may, yeah, but, but they have demonstrated proficiency in English, so they no longer get counted in that category. The federal government looks at Native American students as multilingual learners, not on the state level. We don't. So. For, for federal classification of multilingual students, Native American does. But they also take that same assessment. So we do have some Native American students that no longer qualify. For multilingual services because they have also demonstrated proficiency. Um, it gets, that number gets smaller as the years go up, right? As, as we continue to learn more, right? So.
Yeah, and I appreciate that for clarification.
Maybe not to muddy the waters, but would English language learner, learners be the same thing as a multilingual learner? Yes. So you'll hear him call both things.
Okay, all right, two questions. Native Americans don't. Have their own language. I mean, they do. They don't teach that.
Thomas, I'm gonna go with the categories that the state gives me and I'm not gonna be.
Not like Spanish. So clear, clear that up for me, cause in a Hispanic home, they are taught Spanish.
In some of our Hispanic homes, Spanish is the primary language.
Exactly. That's, that's the point that I'm getting at. So you're saying that down on the reservation.
So, so this, this is, this is, you have hit on something that is very gray and it is very muddy. Because the state does not recognize that as a multilingual learner. The federal government is the only, is, is the area that does it. So like from a funding standpoint, we have two pots of money, like the state money and the federal money, right? The state says, no, we're not gonna consider Native Americans as multilingual learners. Because we are looking at people that speak a language other than English in the home. And, you know, and, and so, and that could be anyone, you know, that could. Our families from Russia, our, you know, from Japan, all of those types of things, even our Native American, you know. Maybe not so much in Chahalas, cause we have such a small, but if you go up into some of the larger tribes where there really is a prevalent, you know. Uh, 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 there are dual language programs or tribal language, you know, in some of those programs, you're gonna see that a little bit more. Um, what we do when we identify our Native American students for title three, so there's, there's a couple of triggers that we, we look for. They have to be shown at risk and literacy. So just because you are a Native American student. Uh, does not necessarily mean that you are gonna qualify for title three federal services. You have to be at risk and literacy and then we can give them what is called that English language development screener. Um, that, that we just screener as, as Danny was talking about. If they do not pass that screener, if they get a low score. They then get into the federal multilingual program. Um. I, I agree with you. There are students in our, in our school right now that are struggling with reading. That if I was to give them that weed of screener, would probably not pass that weed of screen. So no, if I can pass that weed of screener at twelve grade, it's a hard test when you get up in there. So there is some of that gray area in there. I am, I am, I am very much with Will, I, you know, I just. Yeah, the state, the state says this is what we do. Thank you. Um, this is how we're gonna do it. I just follow those rules and then. This is how I get my funding that affords people like Candace. So that, that I just go and I can get along as long as I can keep Candace.
Anybody else? Alright, so I have a new goal. Like I have to come up with, you know, something else that does this kind of a thing. I gotta create this kind of environment the next time. This is a good time for me. Actually, I kinda like it. Alright, any more questions on either of these charts that I can try to help you with? And then I'm gonna run through a quick story that relates back to things that are happening throughout the district starting low end. I spent about a half an hour not too long ago with, um, our Latino Sanito students. And talking to them about careers in education, because you know, we're looking at kids that could potentially be teachers in. Six to eight to ten years. And we talked a lot about the dual language program and how we need them. I mean, we, you look at this, this school district has gone from in, in my eighteen years, from ten percent Hispanic Latino to about thirty percent Hispanic Latino. We have a lot of families that could really use a two language, Spanish and English speaking teacher. Or any other folks that are working, you know, within the school. And so pumping them up to hell, like, hey, this is what teachers make. You could do this. You could do this. And we spent about a half an hour answering questions and working through that kind of stuff. But, uh, you know, as these folks are coming up to us, you know, when I think about the dual language program, they're still about six years away from me at the middle school. So I need some of these folks to be coming back and getting jobs in the future so that we can teach them math and, and science in both language. In both languages. So anyway, fun times with them too. Thanks, everybody.
I like this. He strolls up here, no papers in his hand. He gotta memorize. He knows what he's. So you had the hand.
Well, the thing I've noticed, there's a pattern is, is we go up, the data's, the information is starting to change and it's not, it's kind of more. Data or, or more serious and more, where are we at? So with that trend, go ahead and hit the next screen, Justin. Um. This is our I rated day. This is our first year of doing I ready at the high school. So we don't have the historical data to compare ninth grade against last year's ninth grade. Prior, prior, prior. So this is our baseline data. Um. One of the challenges we have is when our freshmen were at the middle school last year. Before they left, they said, this is the last time you're ever taking I ready. And then they show up at the high school and they say, guess what? You're taking I ready. And so they were kind of like pretty nonplussed and not really excited. And we worked a little bit at the winter window. And you can see there's some, there's growth, not the kind of growth we would like to see. Um, but we're gonna be really focused this spring and help them understand the importance of what they're doing. Um, and reduce the number of kids that, cause there's a, there's, the test will tell you if the kid's gonna click, 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 click. And we, we decrease it from the fall to the winter and we're gonna make it so there are none in the spring. Because this data provides us a lot of information and it's a great indicator. It goes along with S, S B A. And so what we want to do is make sure this data, cause this tells us when they're going into their sophomore year, where we're at. And what areas we need to focus on with them, help them be successful. And so we need, we need them to take it very seriously. And so. We've built some structures. We're gonna go around and talk to the kids. We're gonna have some incentives built in for kids being successful and, and kind of engaging with the test. So we can get really good data out of this. So then as we look at next year, we kind of, as they go into their E L A classes, the English language arts. The teachers will have good data to work from and areas of improvement for each student. They can go in and look at every kid in their class and say, okay. When we're doing this lesson, I need to build some structures for these kids to access the information. And you've heard a lot of talk about letters and, and the, um, biological awareness that we're doing at the lower levels, but. We don't teach reading at the high school. And, but one of the things that we implemented, and it's been school wide all year is vocabulary. And, and this is, this is a positive sign. It's not as big as you'd like to see, but if you look at it. You can see the number of kids that are way behind in the red is going way down. And they're, you can see them shifting to the left. That's what we want. When we're back in June, or if it's late May, I don't know when we're gonna come back and do our final report with you guys, I'm pretty confident this data will look even better. And so I'll be able to put all those next to each other. So you can see the growth in the program. And so we've been across the school focused on vocabulary. It's not just in our E L A classes, whether it's math, whether it's science, whether it's art. Everybody is doing vocabulary, making sure, cause vocabulary is the gateway to access content understanding. If you have the words, when you see them, then you understand and you can put it in context and build concrete in your mind what you're doing. So we're looking forward, so we haven't, we're not on our goal right now. And this is the ninth grade data. And so that would be on the first goal. We're talking about ten percent growth and plus the S B A data. We won't get till probably the fall time, right?
Yes.
So we'll, we'll really be able to check. When we come back next fall, I'll be able to give you an update, um, where we hit with our tenth graders. But this year in June, I'll be able to tell you what we did with our freshmen. Before we leave, at the end of the year, we can tell you where we are. Alright, next slide. So what I did, I was curious, uh, my first year on board, I didn't know what we did last year, so I. Took our English classes and these are all first semester courses. And so we compared last year, first semester to this year. First semester, so apples to apples, different students, but, um. And you can kind of see we're, we're, we're hanging tight. You know, we're statistically, we're not off that much. But we want, we, we need to be improved. And, and I, this came to my attention, cause if we go to the next slide, Justin, we'll come back to this for a second. At the end of the first semester, I went through and looked at all of our Fs. And so that's what drew me back here, is I was connecting to our, um, I already E L A. I was trying to draw the thread through all of these. We have a problem with students not being successful. And if you look at the group that's struggling the most, it's our freshman class. And part of the challenge for us this year is I didn't start till August, so I didn't get to spend any time with my staff. So I had no time to look and say, what were our challenges? How do we do all? We just didn't have time because there was so much already being done. And we're starting, we're doing that process right now. We're looking at building structures to support our incoming freshman class. So that when they come in, it's kind of overwhelming and that's what is the indication is. But if you stop for one second, if you look at the freshman, it says we had a hundred and forty-one total Fs with fifty-four students. But when you look at the bottom number in that twenty twenty-seven column, it's fourteen students. Most of those kids failed nearly everything. So you're looking at six. If you go six times fourteen, that's eighty-four. So over half. Of the Fs came from fourteen kids. And some of those kids are attendance issues. They're not showing up and they're, they're, that. We've identified who they are and a lot of it is attendance based, family issues, all kinds of, you know, we know who those kids are. So what we've done is the front office, so Ms. Brooks, myself, the office staff. Um, Ms. Johnson, our E A, Mr. Yurk, our athletic director, we divided the alphabet in seven. And what we do every week is we run the grades and we, so we each have our section of the alphabet. We make a phone call home. We see a kid with an F, we call. And if we talk to them this week, we won't maybe talk to them next week, we'll get, we'll wait. But we're identifying and we're reaching out personally ourselves and communicating with families to help them. Cause some of our families don't understand how to use Sky where they aren't getting in. Um, and so we want to make sure the family's aware. If we identify a kid, I mean, it's pretty easy in a phone call. You can tell a parent's like, what the heck? And you know, okay, that, that kid's parent's gonna check in. Tell their parents like, okay, thank you. We say, okay, Johnny needs us to do a little extra because he's not got the support at home. And so we're trying to identify all these different structures we can put into place, support our kids, cause ultimately our report card is graduation. And how many of those kids are graduating is gonna be impacted by how many of them are failing because those hundred forty-one Fs all have to be. Earned back. In order to graduate. And so that's, that's, that's a big order. And so this time next year. That number should be significantly smaller than it is right now. That's what our aim is. That's what we'll, this will be, we'll, we'll come right back to this again next year. So that we can measure apple to apples and see the progress we're making. Cause I'm confident. Just with the little bit that we're doing right now for second semester and things that we're building for next year will be way better. Um. And so that's our focus. Um. During advisory, every Monday, they're doing grade checks. We've kind of heightened, um, the conversation piece with teachers and students. Um, they don't just say, well, look, you're failing. They go and say, okay, what assignments are you missing? And they go through and they talk about the assignments. So the student on Wednesday, Tuesday and Wednesday, and every other Thursday, when we don't have club day. They can work on those assignments or they can get called in, they can go over to the class. So if I'm struggling in geometry, I can go see my geometry teacher. And get help with what I need during, um, our advisory period. And teachers, we, we're working on communicating, um. On our grade books and letting parents know when we're updating grades, cause you have. Several different teachers during the day, six, if you're not counting C S R. And each teacher has a different way of doing their grades. And so what I told my teachers is. I know last year, my frustration last year as a parent was near the school district. I would go in on Monday, my daughter would have an A. I'd come back on Friday and she'd have an F. Now how in the heck can your grade go from an A to an F in a week? I said, we don't want our parents to encounter that. We need to make sure we're being consistent. And our grading and making sure that we're doing, we're keeping our grade books up to date in a timely manner. So that when parents, because like a lot of our kids are driving. And if your grade isn't good, all of a sudden you don't have your car anymore. Teacher might want to stay on top of the grades because I don't want Johnny losing his driving bill. Just cause my teacher's not doing their part. Um, so we, we're, we're checking all these boxes and going through these to make sure. Um, that we're getting good communication with families, with students and our staff is staying on top of it. So.
I, I got one thing on.
Bring it at me.
So that. When my daughter was in school, that was one of the biggest headaches in high school. Is that I could look at her grades on Skyward and she'll say, I'll say, well, why do you have a, you know, whatever F. Right here. Well, I took to class, I turned to paperwork in. And then it would still be a week. Sometimes longer.
We're cleaning, we're working on cleaning that up.
I, 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 I'm telling you, I would, and I would get two different answers because Sky would send you an email on Saturdays. If I'm not mistaken. It can. And so there was always something different. They, they were, you know, I would get two different things in front of me. Actually, I have three because the kid was telling me one thing. This was telling me another one. And then the email was telling me a third different thing.
And that's what we're trying to clean up is to get it, we need to get that piece clean. So when we do contact the family. It's accurate and tho- those families that are engaged, they know the data they're pulling off of that grade book is gonna be reflective of what's really happening in the classroom. And that's, and I, as a parent, I was, that's why I initiated this, because I remembered how frustrated I was. And I don't. Want our parents to have that same frustration. And so that's why we started down this path. And we're, we started. Accidentally took us into our gradient policies. And why do we do this? And so we've kind of done a tangent and we're doing, so we're really looking at a lot of different things about. How we assess and what does that look like in a grade book? Because we're focused on assessment a lot. Everything we do. And our buildings is assessment driven because that's how we know our kids learning it or they're not learning. Cause our job is not to teach, it's to make sure our kids are learning. And so the assessment piece, how many of those go into the grade book and when? And so the assessment piece, how many of those go into the grade book and when? And how often? And what's the value? And, and are, what are their projects worth? What are the homework assignments they're doing? And, and so making sure they have a scale of success, a rubric, you know, you can do this, this is where you are. So we're really trying to clean all that up and get it kind of normalized across the school. And so we've had, we have a big conversation going on. In the fall, we should be pretty in lockstep. By the end of the year, I'd like to see it all done and running the way it's supposed to. So that's the hope. Um, just wanted to be honest and show you what we have there. So that we have a real, you know, we don't, for us, the testing data is hard to come by because we have I ready for the freshmen. With the sophomores, we have the SBA, but we have to wait until next year to get the data. Juniors and seniors, we have no testing data at all that we can pull on and say, we did this, we improved. And so this to me is a good measuring stick. And right now it's how many kids are failing. The next step is going to be how many of our kids are getting As. Yeah, I mean, that's, we want to build, how many of our kids are finding the success we want them to have. So that'd be over a course of time that we can develop that. But that's kind of the hope is, we're not talking about how many kids are failing, but how many are being successful. Attendance. Grace mentioned this briefly. So what we did, I don't know if you, how many of you are familiar with March Madness? Can you fill out your bracket for the basketball games and stuff? What we did is we created three divisions. Um, and these are CSR classes. So this is advisory period. And so what you did is we took attendance for the whole week in that attendance for that class. And the one who had the higher attendance rate for the week, won that game and they got to move forward in the bracket. And so which is, what that is, is this is a month long battle right now. So what we've done is we've now reached the final three. So uh, Ms. Bowen, Ms. Iscardo and Ms. Rosa's classes, this, I guess it's going to be next week because we don't have any CSR to get anyone. That's not fair. That's not good measurement data. So next week, when we come after spring break, we'll take the, we'll take their attendance and we'll have a winner and that class gets pizza party. And so we're playing with ideas of attendance. I've kind of, the kids are really into this. They've been talking and it's interesting to see them kind of, you hear conversations a lot. So we're going to beat you guys this week. We're all here, we're coming. And what I want to do in my mind when it develops is kind of like a fantasy football league based on attendance. And so every week, what we're going to do is create a league every quarter. And we'll keep track of who's got the most wins and then we'll have a winner at the end of the quarter and well, so the idea is, is you get to compete, you're, you're going to be competing every single week. Instead of it being getting eliminated, you're trying to move up the, um, league standings and get to the top. So one idea towards attendance to try and increase that. And, um, by looking at our overall attendance numbers, we kind of were going down like this. And then in December, and since January, we're going back up this way. And right now, March was at eighty-seven percent. Um, and we hadn't been there since September. So our kids are re-engaging and we're getting a lot more kids at school. So I think that's reflective of some of this effort here. You can see the overall attendance numbers going up.
The, uh, the kids are really struggling. I'm thinking that home is difficult to catch up at after school. Is there somebody after school, if they need to stay after school and work time catching up, that's there with them?
We make those opportunities available. What we, what we do is we tell, teachers are available, they get there at seven fifteen, so they're before school. We have advisory. So let's, outside of Monday, if I'm struggling in a class and I need some help or a teacher says, I want to talk to them, I want that kid to come to me. They'll give them a pass and the next day they go in, they check in with their teacher and they say, I'm going to go see Mr. Heat Dirks. And so they pack up and they go to that class and get the help they can need. And we do have teachers available for help after school, um, till two forty-five through the contract. Um, we have people who stay late all the time. We have teachers that come early. And so the kids know who they are. And you'll see them in the classrooms. Like I know, I saw grandma coming out of a class because she's raising her granddaughter. And she had brought her granddaughter in and they were, they came in at seven o'clock, were working Mr. Keith until seven thirty-five. And, um, and the kids know, and we tell them, if you need help, you go to your teacher, they'll be, they'll help you. They're going to help you. And our teachers do. If you ask for the help, they give it to you and they'll arrange to support you however that looks like, whether it's before school, during lunch, during advisory, after school, we, we take whatever steps it is to help our kids be successful. We don't have an organized homework program.
Okay. Because during COVID time or pre-COVID, I'm sure that we, remember investment in that tutorial? Where they go online and get tutors.
We still have paper. That's available to them.
Is it being used very much?
Um, not at the level we'd like to see. But I know we encourage them. I know a lot of our, in the ELA departments, a lot of the writing, before they can submit it, they have to demonstrate that they've visited paper and, and gotten got that. I don't know what it looks like with the other departments, but I do know the English department has been pretty heavy in the use.
Thank you.
Is that your world or is that his world?
Mine, I'm looking at it.
That, um, that testing that you started at the beginning of the year for the freshmen.
I ready, yep.
Is that the, somebody had mentioned before that that's a test that they can not put a hundred percent effort in? Is that what you meant by when you?
And so that's what we're trying to reverse.
Yeah. Sure. That's why the number is, is.
The, the data is not as clean as we'd like it to be, we think, right now. And I, that's why I believe our spring number, when you see it, will jump big because I'm going to, I'm personally visiting all the classrooms and we're putting a bunch of structures in place to ensure that we get good data out of that. Because that's going to help us moving forward to know if what we've done this year with them as freshmen is working. And then so we can use that for next year. And so that kind of informs our practices in the classrooms.
I thought it was, but I wanted to make sure you hear all these different things and, you know, it's like, is that the right one? So yeah, I'd heard that before.
Well, I appreciate your honest assessments and we still need to keep working on this learning loss. Like we got the I ready data for this year. Um, I would be interested to see how that compares to the data from the same class last year. When we thought they weren't going to have to take this test again. Fifty-five is still way too high to be two grades below.
I absolutely agree.
I saw the fifty-nine at the beginning of the year, fifty-five. I'm curious as to how that data relates back to the last year. This would be that same group. And this is the group that's had that learning loss. And, and as they're moving through the grade, moving upwards graduation. Is there anything we can do to try to promote, besides the pizza thing, getting these kids back up to grade standards for graduation? I mean, we were able to give waivers when COVID was active and going on. But we need to work with these kids to get them to the point where they are graduate ready.
Absolutely. No, that's the biggest challenge. Cause I, that was my thought today is I went, I was digging through the data and it, because the stuff I grabbed didn't look right. And so I was looking for something different. And I can't see the middle school. So I got to get that part fixed. So I can go grab that eighth grade data. So I can pull apples to apples. Um, and I'm sure we can get that fixed. Um, because that would be helpful to see that difference. Um, but ultimately, I'm going to put money on what we're doing. And so when we get in the, we're going to, we're going to be, the challenge for us this year is I was brand new. And so I'm learning kids, I'm learning staff, I'm watching our culture. I'm trying to see what everything is. And so I spent basically the whole first half of the year kind of watching everything and learning about what we are. And I can, I see the things that we have to do differently. And we're, we're implementing those second semester will be even more strongly implemented next year. Um, and that's why I feel pretty confident we're going to see a big change. Um, not only in the Fs, but in, in performance on I ready. Um, with those freshmen and, and I'm hopeful with the SBAs. Um, hoping them understand the importance of what that information means because that's how we get measured by the state. Tenth grade is the one, our one time we get measured at the high school where down below us, it's almost every year that they get a measurement stick. And so it's a lot easier for them to follow along. So that's the problem for us is there's not a ton of data. Once they get, especially post-tenth grade, um, other than pass fail rate on classes.
Next question. I, um, and it's not really related to this, but what's the cell phone policy for kids bringing their phones into class and having distractions like?
Uh, the, the policy is now, we're working on fidelity. But the policy is you're supposed to walk in and your phone is supposed to be put away. And if it gets, if they take it out during class, which they do, they make referrals to the office, we keep track. And consequences escalated. First time is just a warning. And second, we take, you know, we take it for the day and the kid gets back in the day. Third step, we call parents, they can't, kid can't get it, the parent has to come pick it up. And so we keep escalating. But the, the reality is, is, um, our youths are terribly addicted to these devices and getting them to not. And so what we're going to do next year is, we, we talked about it this year and we didn't really do it, but I'm going to make sure we do it next year is, is everyone pulls their backpack out, everyone physically has to have their phone. And they physically have to put their phone in their backpack. And then there's no excuse um, for touching your phone. It should be in your backpack. And if you're taking out your backpack during class, then we have larger issues and we can figure out how to deal with that on our end. Um, but the expectation is there should be no phones up in class. And then every once in a while, you know, there'll be like, there was a physics class where they were doing some stuff and they had one of the kids using his phone as a timer and then one kid videoing what was going on. So they could kind of do documentation to put in for their, um, so there are instances where a teacher will say, take your phone out and use it. But the expectation is there should be no phones present in class when we're doing direct instruction.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your time. Great information tonight.
So I, I just have a few things tonight. The first one is, um, celebrating our, all the students who went to Skills USA. Um, up on the slide is we're definitely recognizing Grace and the other students. She, she did a really nice job explaining, um, the successes of our kids in robotics and drones. Um, I do think it's important to note that it's six years in a row that Rochester had won first in the robotics search and rescue. And, uh, the drones team, that's the second year in a row that, 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 that team won first. And that we have four young ladies who are up there in the top. And I keep rooting for our young ladies. I think it's great that we got the guys out there, but I'm really glad to see that we have some really, um, star women who are, you know, competing and doing a great job at the state level. So um, want to congratulate them. The other thing that we did have welding and, um, ASL competed. Um, this was just this last Saturday. And the welding kids did a really nice job. They didn't complete all of the components of the competition. So they're still working on getting to the point where they compete and everything. Um, Mr. Jesky says, once they get to that point, he believes his kids are going to be really doing a great job in welding as well. And we did have a student in ASL who placed him fourth at the state level. So we're starting to make a presence in those two areas as well. Yep. And Justin was up there with them and he might want to tell you just a little bit about it. He was explaining how, um, when you watch the kids compete in drones and they've got cages so they're, you know, protecting everybody out.
Our kids were fine. They didn't need the cage. Many of the school's kids didn't need the cage. Otherwise they're, they're after bloodshed everywhere.
This is a really big event though. And our kids are competing against kids from the largest high schools in the state. This is not something where we only compete against schools of like size. And when they go to, um, nationals, um, they will be competing against schools throughout the entire country. And it's, you know, from the largest schools to the smallest schools.
Is it everybody?
It's the first, first place goes. And sometimes they take alternates, right? If there's empty spots, but.
For a while.
Okay. But first place always goes. Next, uh, just you heard a little bit about the WISF or Washington School Improvement Framework. And on the nineteenth of March, they did, at the stage, OSPI did release uh, students or schools that were on comprehensive and targeted supports. That's where we get all this great data that you heard about, or one of the places we get some really good da- data. Uh, in that area, they identify schools throughout the state that have areas where we continue to grow and, um, this program provides supports. Uh, some of that support is in, uh, personnel to come in and ask us good questions and help us develop some plans. And the other support is in funding sometimes. Um, with our, with Heart, RMS, RMS and GMS, we will get some um, financial support to do some additional work with the kids. RHS isn't at a tier, being at tier one, they will not get any financial support. But you can see the trend there. That, you know, the areas where we need to continue to work are with our English language learners and our students with disabilities. And that's the areas where we, we, um, continue to are noted for, that's those, uh, that student group needing to do a better job or needing to close the gap with all students.
I feel like heart kids are graduating.
Yes.
It's an on-time graduation.
It's an on-time graduation and the kids who are at Hearts are typically there because they're not graduating on time. So.
Every ALE program of the state has that.
Okay. It's one of those things that I look at that and I think, well, you're going to give me some money to help the kids graduate in time? Okay, I'll take it, you know, and we'll do it. And that is the reason that Heart is identified is because of the low graduation rate.
Good. Ask, um, so what kind of support are they giving us besides out of boys? Are we getting money? We're getting teachers?
Yes.
Getting building instruction?
We do get some financial support. It's not enough to purchase a teacher. Each school gets a different amount. So it can be anywhere from thirty to say sixty thousand dollars. Um, and what's that? Oh, do we, we did? I don't know. I didn't see that. Oh, okay. Well, we'll tell you what the allocation is. We, we just received our allocation. It's less. That's what we needed to hear. In the past, we've gotten someplace between thirty and sixty thousand dollars depending on which level the students were on. But then we would actually be able to develop a plan and use the, that fund, those funds in any way that we saw fit to work towards improving, um, in our, with our kids and especially in those targeted areas where we need to work to.
It was not really like a grant funding, like we have to give them a specific thing, wish list from these assessments that they have given.
We don't have to put in a wish list. We put in a plan and then we could decide how we want to use those funds to implement the plan.
Thank you.
And next up is just a quick note. I don't think I've shared with you that we are moving forward. I don't know. Skyward two point O, you've heard a lot about Skyward. You heard, um, Mr. Fionna's tonight talking about parents accessing Skyward for grades and things like that. It's being updated. And so we are making the shift in everything else that we're doing this year. We're not quite busy enough yet. So we're going to completely move to a new student HR business management system. And that means that in July, um, we're going to migrate over to this new system. We will have some dark days in the system from July nine through twelve. And there is training that needs to be done for everybody throughout the system. Um, so that when we come back in August, we're ready to use the new program. Um, that means even our parents, because the system will look different for parents. They'll have an app that is supposedly much easier to use. They, it, there's many things that will look similar, but the grade books will look different, how our teachers can enter grades will look different, how they post their grades for report cards is going to look different. Um, some of the things that sales team is doing in both HR and business, there's things that are you know, going to look different when we're doing it. And we're excited about the changes. Some of the things we've seen really make us go, wow, that'll be great. It's the work to get to that point that has us, um, I think a step back and saying, right, you can make it happen on time. Um, the the big push is, um, really training our administrators soon and then all of the people in this office so that they know what's going on. Because we will need to run our payroll for both June and July before we go dark in July. So there's a lot of pushing to get everything done. So that we can make the change and roll over. And then we will already have our July, July payroll done. So that we don't have to worry about knowing how to do that for July. And then we'll learn how to do it for August. That's just one example of what we're going to be doing. Anything to add to that, Jill? She's really excited about it all.
Motivated to learn.
Yes. There are good videos. Justin's already got a bunch of badges. Yes.
It'll be great.
It will be good.
Affordable, you said, parents?
Parents will have an updated app and updated access in August.
So when, when it comes to schools, are to, uh, what orientation?
Sue success conferences and things, yep.
Okay.
We will be showing them what they need to know for, uh, the new access. The, one of the other big pieces that we have to do is we're cleaning up all of our data now. So that when it rolls over, everything's as accurate as possible.
Oh.
Yes.
Is there, is there dual, not dual, multiple languages with it? Like parents that are Spanish to get only with
Yeah. So Skyward right now does not work in other languages, languages very well. Where we've heard that, um, Humiliton, which is a new tool, is better, but it's still limiting. Which is kind of surprising because this is used all over the. Which is kind of surprising because this is used all over the country, but there are things that we. We are, registration, for instance, we've had to jimmy some systems up so that. Our Spanish speaking families can register and a lot of them just end up calling the RISE.
Sounds like a equity issue that OPSI should be addressing.
Yeah, it's, this is a. It's a company. We've got to work with the company, so.
State has to approve them though.
Because what's, that is, and Justin was kind of showing a couple of tricks to us. The smarter our smartphones gets, the better it is going to be for our families. So we may not have to rely on. Was it to see or the company as much, yeah, sometimes they can change their browsers and do some on. Like write on demand translations, um, on your phone. And so Justin was kind of showing me a couple of tricks. And showing the, uh, the ladies at the RISE Center a couple of tricks to kind of help of our families, because most of the time our families. Uh, our multilingual families don't have computers at home. They, like all of us, we get on the internet on our phone, right? Or on our tablet. That's really where. Where are, are the majority of the work that we do, you know, should I pay my bills on my phone, right? So, so I, I, I think.
Things are changing.
I think there's, there's hope besides what the company's doing that we can make it.
Next up, we have, um, Rochester Primary School Assistant Principal Selection Process. Um, we are running the interview process tomorrow. We did do a virtual interview with the. Eight candidates over the weekend or just actually beginning of this week, and now we have four candidates coming in tomorrow. Similar process to what we use with the principal, but asking questions and having them do things that are more appropriate to the assistant principal. Danny, of course, is sitting in on that team and I'm going to be engaged in all of that and, uh. Open to have a assistant principal selected soon. And I think there's one more slide, just some upcoming dates. So I want to remind you and everybody else kindergarten registration is open. Please make sure that you're, when you see a young child walking down the street, ask if they're five.
Then you'll get a visit to Jeff's.
Spring break is next week, so schools, this office is shut, uh, closed to the public. Andrea. We've heard that quite a bit this week. She will be here. If you need anything, you can call Andrea, but the office is officially closed. Kindergarten registration, kindergarten information fair is April tenth. If you want to stop in at RPS. Prior to the board meeting on the tenth, I think it'd be a great place to be and you'd, I'm sure see some things that would make you smile. You know, the boardwork session on the tenth after that kindergarten registration. Uh, process. I think the fair starts at five or five thirty. Yep, five to seven and it ends from six three to seven with our multi, our dual language presentation for families interested. Uh, but the first hour and a half is a scavenger hunt through campus to experience different things that kindergartners get excited about. The cafeteria and chicken nuggets, the bus, all those fun things.
You should drop off there at five thirty.
Yes, you should.
We're here, so you're here by six thirty. That's a great thing to do on your way to the work.
You can have chicken nuggets too.
Yes.
We have a board meeting on the twenty fourth. I do want to note that there's a multicultural festival, uh, at RHS, correct? Five o'clock? All right about that, okay. Five o'clock and that's on the twenty sixth. That was a great festival last year and if you. Want to see our kids shining, um, and celebrating their cultural, cultural background, it was, it's a fabulous evening. So I really encourage you to drop in and see that. There was food, there was kids doing basket weaving, there were students sharing about the country, the. Countries that come from our, our, some of our, um. Our new students who are, yeah, our newcomers, um, were there and using their English skills to explain to us about their. Where they're, where they were from. So it was just a wonderful evening. Uh, and then the dual language family night is on May seventh. Another, you heard a little bit about that from Danny today, so I'd encourage you to be there and then graduation is on the ninth. When is? Hart's graduation. Okay, I will, I will have, okay. We'll confirm that, but that's another graduation. We did that outside last year under the tent and it was a very nice ceremony and then something you might want to have on your. And we have not finalized that conversation yet, but I'm thinking that it's going to be the same as what we did last year, only this time it won't rain.
Yeah, it was a great time.
All right. So you want to, uh, let's see before we move on?
Yeah. Who, who wants to leave? We don't have anything for you.
We have a long day to conference.
We'll see you later.
Thank you. Thank you everyone. Congratulations.
Thomas, we take a minute?
I'm gonna. Yes, take a minute. We're back from our break.
First up, we have asset, asset preservation program. And Ed, do you want to just give us a real brief overview of what that is?
Yeah, we, we have the, um, ICOS. But we have the ICOS reports that come in, reports on our building conditions and everything. So this year we had, um, we've had. Uh, Ray Mao do it ever since that I started in two thousand and eighteen. This year we had a case. So it's nice to have a different set of eyes on it. She kind of picks out on different things. Um, so really, I just, if you guys had any questions on the report, any of the things, I'll make sure I should just answer. It's very similar to the, the BCA, the building condition assessment. It's just the fact that the ICOS comes in in a separate way. You know, they, they detail all the way down to, you know, loose siding on the back of the middle school or if you're old.
So it just, it just says what was wrong?
Yeah, yeah, sidewalks, they need separation and stuff like that. And the way, the way I use those reports is when I get those ICOS reports. Um, as soon as I get them, I instantly submit work orders so that we can address these issues. It's nice because you get a second set of eyes. They, they, they come and look at stuff. It's, it, it's nice because. When I accepted this job in two thousand and eighteen, one of my goals was that in, within two years, which somebody told me that would never happen, but I, I, I thought that I'll. Once a week I'd have like a thirty minutes to go around and find all things, do PMs, just things that need to be fixed and. I, I just can't, I can't get that time with Saturday. I just can't get there. But when we do the ICOS reports, that's really what's happened with an outside set of eyes. They're coming around saying, hey, what about this and what about this, what about this? So it's a, a time that I could take advantage of getting work orders in on things that we don't normally get time to go and do.
Did they list it by priority for you?
No, but what it does is it judges it by the school and then it gives you a rating on the school as to condition, you know, depending on severity of what it is.
Are you surprised by anything or?
No, everything's the same. It's like the primary school, they, they, they picked up on the roof needs to be cleaned, you know, and that's one of those things that. We, Jennifer, I've been working on since, you know, last three years, but.
And cleaning the roof is not something we can use capital funds for, so at this point we do not have the funds to pay for.
Cleaning a roof is a, you know, forty to eighty thousand dollar metric.
Oh, yeah.
And does it have to be a union or, uh, prevailing wage?
Unwage, yeah.
Yeah, it does.
It's so, but anyways, in the reports that nothing was surprising, but it's just looking at it for the first time. If somebody had any questions, I just want to make sure that we could answer them.
So are they about to do the assessment or are they just?
They've already, they already did it.
Okay, so our areas of need is moss on the roof?
Uh, there's a whole list in the report there.
There's a whole list.
Ah, so I gotta dig.
Sorry.
That's all right.
For the primary school and the middle school.
Any other questions? Anything else? Okay. Uh, how old we have? Okay. You got the. Policy? Oh, oh, sorry. I thought you were in it. Okay.
So this is first reading of policies. These are policies that we've gone over at the work session. Um, just to note that they are here and this is their first reading. This was. Uh, policy thirty two thirty, which is the student privacy and searches. And the primary updates there were, um. My goodness, I don't remember what this was about, what the change was. Uh, but oh, confining the detailed information about conducting searches, really pinpointing who can conduct searches and what it means to do the searches. Being more, uh, specific in the language that's used and then providing information about students' privacy rights at the end of the policy. As it relates to searches. Then the next policy that's there is thirty two or thirty four twenty one, which is child abuse and neglect. And the big updates there were defining, um, uh, moving, they moved. They defined child abuse and then they clarified the requirement to, to report. Uh, there, it wasn't actually, the way it was written didn't say that it was a requirement to report and now it's very clear. That it's a requirement where it was somewhat, uh, just, I was surprised when I read it that it was not as clear as it was, as, as it needs to be. So the mandatory reporting now is very clear in this policy.
But we get those, that stuff from, uh, OSPI though, right?
Yes, these are updates that came from WASDA. So that's it. Your next one is off campus overnight trips.
We need to vote on these individually?
Uh, the, uh, the off campus overnight, you can do it in one motion there.
Oh, I thought you said we didn't have to, we were. Oh, my, my.
We don't approve.
Yeah, okay.
Not in the first reading.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was saying.
I thought we were talking about.
Okay, uh, so we need to approve this.
Yep.
Correct? Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve? Anyone?
Some of the, on the off ca- on the, um, overnight trip?
Yes.
Yeah, some.
Okay, a second please.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussions?
So I will just add in there, this is three different, uh, trips that are going. Uh, the future business leaders of America and sports medicine team are both going to the Skills USA. Competition in their areas and then this is also pre approving five track players to go or. Track, um, members to go to Pasco Invitational. We don't know exactly who that's going to be yet, but we don't have another board meeting before the April twelfth. So this is approving them. If the kids qualify, they can go.
But we know who the, the.
We know who the FBLA and the sports medicine kids are.
But the coach gives, the coach or the person going with the track team if they go?
Yes, we have got a coach and that's all outlined, coaches and, and, uh, chaperones.
Okay.
Should we do? Should we just say whoever qualifies for state least support? Like, what if there's more than five or there won't be?
This, yeah, this is, and this isn't state, this is an invitational.
Oh, that's just the invita- okay, I'm sorry.
We have another month before states and we will be sending kids there too, I think. Come on now.
Anything else? You, you look like you. Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Next, oh, donation. Monetary donation from the Chaylus Tribe. Of sixty five hundred dollars. Towards the district athletic programs. Okay, board policy requires the school board approval for the donation in amount. Of, of a thousand dollars or greater, okay?
You have to make a motion for that, right?
Yeah, I've, yeah. It wasn't pulling up for some reason. I was trying to click on it real quick.
Oh, good.
No.
I have a question, just specifically for athletics or is this could be used to fix the fire suppression system in the stadium?
They have stated that this is for athletics.
Okay, so shoes and shirts and.
We have. Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Okay, a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, so the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dustin. Okay, the surplus item, I was in one item of the, the cutter or something. Uh, this is that one.
See it seriously?
Okay, okay, um, do I have a motion to approve the cell of the. Yeah, outdated, a little hunger, that computerized neural control machine.
It's Windows ninety eight.
Almost.
Okay, I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, motion passes. Okay, all capable.
Okay.
Seven slides?
No, I have four slides. One of the things that we are required to do by law is, uh, to have our highly capable program plan presented to the board and approved by the board every year. So that's why we are here. Um, talking about our plan for the twenty three, twenty first full year. Uh, I put up here just the definition of what highly capable is. Uh, this is a state definition, uh, is that students who perform or show potential for performing at significantly advanced academic levels. Uh, as compared to their peers, uh, at, at the same age experiences and environments. Um, outstanding abilities are within students' general intellect, aptitudes, specific academic abilities. And their creative productivities within a specific domain. So really wide net of what the state could consider highly capable. And that these are present in just both the general populace, but that also within protected classes. And that is, you know, looking obviously at, you know, uh, student disabilities, multi-label students, uh, students who are. Receive reduced lunch, those would be considered to be protected classes. Okay. So this is the process. There aren't any big changes to, to the highly capable program. So our, our, our system has stayed. Relatively the same since, uh, we moved K twelve, which was my first year here. Um, and, uh, so we do have a referral process. So referrals can be given by any time, by anyone. Uh, we do, uh, screen those referrals and make decisions to proceed with cognitive testing twice a year. So there are, um, some deadlines as far as. When a referral would need to be in and in order to kind of meet the cutoff of, of when, uh, we would make those decisions, but we will take referrals every year. So for example, referral could come in tomorrow. We passed our last test to deadline, so we would, you know, meet with that student about that student in the fall. Uh, we also do universal screening. That's where we look at every student in a grade level. We do that in second grade and then we also do it in fifth grade. Uh, this is new this year. We've always, always in the last few years, we've done second grade. Uh, the, the legislature passed some additional legislation on highly capable and they said universal screening in two grade levels. So we added fifth grade this year. We use iReady. You know, we're very conscious about overtesting kids, so we use iReady in fifth grade. So we're not putting a whole nother assessment on, onto our fifth grade students. Um, when a screening happens, when testing cognitive testing happens, we have a multidisciplinary team. Uh, that meets and really looks at multiple data points in order to identify students for the highly capable program. Now that we target and highly capable is, uh, you know, targeted at three to five percent, right? So, so we really try to keep that. I mean, that's a soft number, but highly capable is not for. Every single bright student that we have, right? There is, uh, a, there is a, a small section. Of, of really capable students that we would consider highly capable that need additional services. In order to enrich their experiences. Um, and those services are depend, determined based on the, the strengths. And so that's what that multidisciplinary team does. Uh, then obviously the next step is place them into the program and that's we have this continuum of services. So there really are, their service plans are designed to meet the needs of the students. And those service plans are renewed every year. So it's something that we send to parents. We actually do it during our highly capable family night. They get a copy of that service plan. They agree to which services they want. They delete services that they don't want their students to have. Um, and that's, uh, kind of how we provide the program. Uh, the continuum of services, so very similar to what we.
Uh, the continuum of services, so very similar to what we would do with intervention, tier one, tier two, tier three. So the tier one services, I'm not going to go through all of them. That is uh, what most students in the highly capable program will receive. Uh, obviously individual service plans, differentiation things within the classroom. So not pull out things that will happen within the classroom for those students. Tier two is a little bit more graduated uh, support. And uh, when I say support, it's not support on struggling things. So highly capable is enrichment and extension. So we focus on the strengths of a student and we find opportunities to uh, enhance their strengths. And to provide them enrichment opportunities based on the strengths that they're showing, um, that got them into the program. And so that's where there are pullout services. We do things like telescoping on, in, in the middle school. That's where like our math is what's considered telescoping. So we try to do a year and a half curriculum in sixth grade. A year and a half curriculum in seventh grade so that they would be um, able to do eighth grade algebra. And get that high school credit in eighth grade, which will then allow them to do advanced classes at, at, on the high school. Uh, obviously the pre AP run and start, a lot of the things that are open to. Most kids, all kids are open to our highly capable students. They get a little bit of um. Uh, you know, kind of a guarantee that yes, they would be able to, to participate in these. They would be able to participate in AP. But one of the things that I think is always important to remember is that highly capable services are a part of basic education. So even though there are some that are unique, they are going to be found in a basic education for all students. Because that is an arm of their basic education. That makes sense, that makes sense. Tier three does happen. Um, it does not happen very often, but it has all of the things that, that are listed here have happened. It's my tenure here. Uh, early entrance to kindergarten, grade level acceleration. Um, so if a student is moving up. Uh, you know, increasing a grade level, um, independent study. We do that at the middle school, high school level occasionally. Um, and then also single subject acceleration. The example that I could have is we had a, 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 a highly capable student that was extremely um. Gifted and proficient in, in mathematics. And so when he was in seventh grade, we actually had. Him take a bus to the high school to, to go into calculus class. So I mean, so those are types of things that we do. Those are unique situations. Um, that's not the norm. That's why we consider that tier three. So of that three, five percent, three to five percent is that top. Half percent and it doesn't happen every year. Any questions?
Yeah.
Highly capable used to be a, a, instead of competition?
Destination imagine.
Yeah, is that still a thing now COVID's over?
It is, it is, it is still a thing. Um, you know, when our program moves to a, a part-time um, teacher. Uh, we, we lost the person that was really into wanting to do that program outside. There is a stipend involved in it. Uh, and so we have had a hard time. We open up that stipend every year. Uh, so. The ability to do the program depends on do we have somebody that's able, that wants to run the program, run that, run that club type of thing. It is a very parent driven type of thing. It's also, it, 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 it comes and it goes, you know. So I think it was popular for a little bit. I'm always helpful. We always talk it up at our highly capable family night. That we do have this opportunity. I always try to say it's like Olympics of the mind, Odyssey of the mind. That if, that tends to be more my generation, you know, they're like, oh, I know what that is. Um, and, and, and so, um, so it's, it's always there as an option. If, if families want to, to do that, we were more than happy. I, there are lots of programs that are only parent run. Does not, you do not need to have a school sponsor. We would provide that and if a parent wanted to take on that, that role of saying, I really want my child to do this and their friends to do it. Um, we would be more than happy to do that for them and, and walk them through that, so.
No questions, okay?
There we go. I just need an approval. Yeah, we gotta take action.
How many kids do we have that are involved in this program in the district?
Um, so I, gee, oh my goodness. I, 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 it's, it's gonna, I need your rough estimate, unless I'm gonna give you the real one. It's about a hundred.
Don't get next meeting.
No, I'm with that right now. So if you go make an approval while I pull this up and then.
I have one question then.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're, you're saying this is for the twenty three, twenty four school year. Isn't that what we're in right now?
So the reason that this is delayed is that OSPI. Um, did not give us our grant application nor our uh, allocate, official allocation until. So.
So we're actually approving something that's already.
That is already in there. And so, yes, typically in normal years, I come to you in August with this.
So you'll be coming to us again?
I, yes, my hope is that.
Okay, okay. I was just curious.
No, no, that is a very valid question, um, because I've been waiting all year for that. Knowing that I have spent this money, but haven't applied for the.
Got it, okay, well.
PSI standards. Signing off. PSI standards?
Yeah.
That, that's what we were waiting.
Yeah.
Three visions, so now we know what we're voting for.
It was.
Be in compliance. I get it.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No opposed, the motion has passed.
I didn't see the.
Seven hundred and, a hundred fifty nine, hundred fifty nine two. I was gonna say, it's somewhere in the hundred and fifty range, but hundred fifty nine two.
Really?
Yeah, we will see a bump. Um, uh, we just finished our universal screening of our second grade. So our, our team will meet in April to identify students from our second to our third. So we tend to see a little bit of a bump, um, there because we, we lose, we lose soft, our um. Seniors, obviously. So there's this little bit of a lag time, but yeah.
Thank you. I need that number. Good number, I'm glad to hear.
Hi, you know, I should have probably known that before I walked in, but that's why I have my computer play with a lot of numbers.
Okay, social media litigation. Ready, okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Well, second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion is passed. Maybe the. Resolution twenty four dash zero three, reduced education plan.
So this is the resolution that allows us to rip staff as we need to develop our balance budget for next year. And here it does say that there's ten, we could re, we could reduce our certificated staff by up to ten FTE. Our classified staff by up to five and our unrepresented up, back to two. That allows us to do the work we need to do to get to that balance budget.
What, what would be considered the uh, unrepresented staff? Is that like maintenance? Is that the office?
Office, uh, office people here, admin, um, administrators, yeah.
Justin.
Motion? Let's just go to the union. Is this what this is? Um, I mean, is this like a, an in-house resolution or?
We are going to do a reduction in force, we have to have a, a resolution.
And work with the union, right?
The union or?
Union?
The union, uh, we have a process that will need to do a reduction in force, in force with both the REA and the RESP. We have a process we have outlined that we will follow with.
Okay, so that's what this is.
Yes.
Okay.
And they've been part of the conversations, both.
Okay, okay, yes, I knew you, you had said that you were going to draft this. Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I will make that motion, so move.
A second one?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion is passed. No public comment?
Have they been watching us tonight?
No, not whatsoever. Okay, it is twenty seventeen, meeting is adjourned.